Welcome, ladies and gentlemen, to the Tuesday, April 25th Planning Commission meeting. Please help yourselves to a copy of the agenda for important information and to follow along, if you'd like. As far as public comments and addressing the commission, any person wishing to address the Planning Commission on any matter listed on the agenda or on any other matter within our jurisdiction is asked to complete a speaker card that is provided here on the podium and submitted to planning staff, please. Also, please do not speak out of turn or do anything to disrupt during the meeting. I don't think we'll have that problem today. But please identify on the speaker card if you would like to speak if it's an agenda item or a non-agenda item. And also, non-agenda items will be heard during oral communications before the public hearing section on the agenda, and those will be limited to 30 minutes. I may impose shorter times if necessary to move it along. And do we have any cards initially? We've got a few. Yeah, we're going to get started with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner Redholtz, followed by a moment of silent prayer, so please stand.
Please follow me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Put your hand over your heart, ready to begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with clarity and justice for
And roll call, please, Jeff.
Commissioner Hing. Commissioner Holtz. Commissioner Jimenez.
Present.
Commissioner Redholtz.
Here.
Chairman Castellanos.
Here. Thank you. And approval of minutes, did anyone notice any necessary changes? None. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, I don't have any cards for oral communications, but I do have a card for the consent calendar. Mr. Peter Wang, would this be the time for him to come up on that?
Perhaps I'll just give a brief description of what's on there, and then that would be the time, actually. I apologize, the consent calendar should be part of oral communications.
Okay. Well, I'll read a mention again, as I mentioned earlier, this is the time when any member of the public may speak to us on any matter within the scope of duties assigned to the commission related to non-agendized or consent calendar items. Other matters included on this agenda may be addressed when that item is under consideration. And I already told you guys about the time limit, so Mr. Peter Wang, if you'd like to come up and speak on item number two on the consent calendar, please.
Ladies and gentlemen of commissioners, my name is Peter Wang, we're the principal of JWL and associate, we are the engineer and architectural firm in charge design for the proposed, you know, the building, the new building for the nonprofit organization for the specialized disadvantage kits. And I think now due to the financial issue, you know, the contractor was not able to pull out the permit on time. Actually, when the organization, their CD was mature and they can get the money out, but at the time, you know, it was just a few day past the planning, planning approved deadline. So therefore, by rule, that we have to file the extension to get this approval reinstated. And we believe, you know, the, actually, we will, you know, to pull the permit, once the Planning Commission or the approved disattention, we will, you know, the contractor will pull the permit within months. So because all the funding is in place, it was missing a few days. We appreciate, you know, the Ron Garcia, you know, the very helpful guide, guide us through the process, and we were able to, you know, present to you today. Really appreciate your help and for your consideration. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Wang. We do have a question by Commissioner Jimenez.
Yes.
So per your letter, you're saying that there's a funding issue. Is it a partial funding or full funding issue?
Actually, you know, they, they don't, they don't have, they don't have the funding issue, it's just like when they, they're trying to collect, you know, of course, you know, whenever they have the money, they want to collect as much interest as they can. So they don't want to prematurely close that CD and cost a penalty. And so that's actually what happened. It's only missed a few days, they miscalculated, they...
According to your letter, it says that they've been experiencing delays in obtaining the necessary funds to carry out this project, and that you still intend to move forward in the near future. It doesn't lead me to think that that's something short term. So to confirm, is this a matter of pulling all the money that's already in the pot to move forward?
Yes, confirm, you know, there's no, there's no funding issue. There's no funding issue, just like when they're trying to pull out the permit, we, actually, you know, we never, we wrote this one, you know, basically, we're trying to, you know, making sure that as an architect and engineer firm, we just present whatever the possible situation.
So the funding's in place?
Funding is in place.
100%?
100%, sir.
Where are you in the plan check process?
Actually, they already approved.
So building permits are issued?
Building permit is ready to issue.
To issue, you demoed already, though, correct?
Yes, you demoed already.
Okay. And have you pulled the permits, have you paid the fees for your building permits?
Actually, the day we were trying to pull the permit, we find out was expired on planning, planning approval.
Okay.
The planning approval actually before the building approved. So actually, planning was expired at the time we're trying to pull the permit.
So basically, you're reviving your planning approval?
Right.
In order to pull your building permit?
Yes.
Is that correct, staff?
Yes.
Thank you.
So they've got approval for the plan check, but they have not pulled the building permit?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wang. Thank you, Jeff. Do we just need a...
For the, if you have any other questions of staff, we'd be happy to answer them, but for the consent calendar, that's the only item on, and if you want to just make a motion for that, that's another alternative.
Okay.
Questions of staff or make the motion.
Or do we have any, anyone else in the audience who would like to speak oral communications on this? We do have somebody. If you'd like, it's on this item?
It's not on the agenda, but...
If it's not on the agenda now is the time, yes. Right now would be the time, yes. Or you could wait till the end, your choice.
I would recommend going ahead and doing it, filling out a card afterwards.
You want to go first, or...
You could bring the card up later, if you would like to tell us your name, please.
Yes, good evening. My name is Abdul Ahmed. I'm a business owner, and I have a number of businesses that I run, and actually, one of them is medical marijuana. And as you all know, there's been a lot of changes lately in the state legislature. And I would like to request that we do a in-depth discussion on the issue of medical and/or recreational marijuana. Last year, in all the 50, well, all the states that have approved it, the gross sales were over $14 billion, and there, the financial gurus are saying that it's going to grow to over $30 billion in the next four years. The state of Colorado collected over $1.1 billion in gross sales and around $77 million in extra taxes that are being used towards treatment for people who have serious problems with methamphetamines and heroin, et cetera. The, there's at least, I would say, seven, 16 cities in California that allow either cultivation and/or dispensaries. There's a number of cities that actually me and my company are working with at this point, and it, it has been proven by many research documents that marijuana actually can be used as a medicine, and it has a lot of beneficial qualities. Myself, I've had a license in the city of Los Angeles for eight years. We get, we used to get patients who had cancer, HIV/AIDS, fibromyalgia, a number of ailments that the regular pharmaceutical, you know, opioid-based or, or just the regular medicines, they did not work for them, and they had a lot of side effects, whereas marijuana has been used by humankind since 7,000 B.C. It was legal up until 1937 in our great country, and for a number of reasons, it was banned in 1937. Just in closing, George Washington and, I believe there was another president, actually grew and used it for personal use and also clothing, fiber, rope, and our, the Constitution of the United States is written on hemp paper, which is the mail plant of marijuana. Thank you.
I do have a question for you, sir.
Sure.
Did you attend the study sessions that we've had on this, or were you aware?
I did the first one, but I haven't, I've been a little busy, so I've come back after maybe two months.
Okay.
Did I miss it?
I think there's a mailing email list that we might be able to get you on. Staff could talk to you about that later. Commissioner Redholtz, did you have a question as well?
Yeah, you're in the dispensary business, or...
Yes, I've, I'm not operating right now, but I've had a license in Los Angeles since 2009.
For medical?
Medical marijuana, yes. And I did, at that time, I did dispense and also did cultivation and some manufacturing. Along with that, I have other businesses, I mean, the car business, also have aerospace welding company in South Almonte. So I have, I work for the U.S. government, for the military and commercial airlines. We weld parts for airplanes. All right, thanks.
Jeff, go ahead.
I think it's important to probably note that the, the planning commission's already made a decision on that and forwarded to the city council. Actually, the city council hearing on the marijuana regulations will be a week from tonight, here in this room. So wouldn't do you any good to sign up for the notification at this point for that meeting because it's already gone out.
So I should just show up?
But you can go to, you should show up to that and see what happens, and if there's further meetings, you should sign up for the e-notification on the website.
That's on the website?
It's on the website. Look for e-notifications on the city webpage up in the right-hand corner, follow the information till you find a code amendment on marijuana regulations.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else wishing to speak on oral communications? Doesn't look like it. Any more questions of staff before we close this? Okay. For the consent calendar, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Consent calendar passes 4-0, moves us along to public hearings, item number three on the agenda. This is, applicant is Dennis Kutevav, I hope I'm saying that properly, and this, this will be presented by Christine De La Strinos.
Good evening, Chairman and fellow commissioners. Tonight, I will be presenting administrative use permit number 17-02 for the subject property on 3006 Nogales Street. The applicant is requesting the use of a dance school in an existing tenant space zone as planned community development, PCD-1. Under the municipal code, under all zones, schools, including recreational schools such as dancing, martial arts, art, and similar type uses, require the review and approval of an administrative use permit. Therefore, the applicant is requesting an AEP for the proposed dance school called Legend Dance School. An AEP is a discretionary view that is done administratively with a required 10-day public review period through public notification and shall meet required findings. Through public request or through the discretion of the planning director, the application may be forwarded to the planning commission. The applicant's request for a dance school has been forwarded by the planning director because of the size of the dance school. The existing tenant space of 6,130 square feet where the proposed use is much larger than the typical size of a similar recreational studio, such as dance studios and martial arts studios. The subject property is located in an existing commercial center known as the Quail Ridge Shopping Center. The center was built in 1979 and has been occupied by a variety of uses. Currently, the tenant space is vacant. The commercial center is located on the south portion of the city, east of Nogales Street and north of La Puente Avenue. The center is surrounded by residential neighborhoods on the north and east side. Adjacent to the center is Nogales High School, and south of the center is another commercial center of the city of La Puente. Historically, the parking ratio for uses within the Quail Ridge Shopping Center is one parking space per, for every 250 square feet of floor area. This is under the retail parking requirement. The existing tenant space is 6,130 square feet in area and is designated 24 parking spaces based on the retail parking requirements. This number of parking spaces continues to be available to the tenants within the building. Parking for the proposed dance school is calculated at one space per two employees and one space per two adult students. The applicant indicated that the dance school will consist of a maximum three employees and a maximum of 45 students present within the space at any time. Based on a maximum of 48 individuals on the proposed and existing use... Based on a maximum of 48 individuals on the proposed and existing use, a total of 24 parking spaces are required. The shopping center currently provides 429 parking spaces and the uses in the center require 404 parking spaces. Therefore, there is sufficient parking for the proposed use. Here's a site plan. Here you could see where the dance school will be located. Right there. The proposed dance school use will provide a variety of dance classes, including zumba, ballroom dancing, salsa, hip-hop, street dancing, ballet, jazz, and freestyle. The classes will be available for all ages, encouraging individuals to further excel in their dance education. The school operates only on weekdays from Monday through Friday, 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. The school will provide a minimum of 10 classes per day with a maximum of 30 students and one instructor per class. At the given time that both classrooms will be used, there will be a maximum of 45 students, two instructors, and one office manager. The students will range from age ranges of six to 86 years old. The applicant proposes that only one classroom will be used in the morning and there will be two classrooms used simultaneously in the afternoon. Dance area number one will serve a maximum of 15 individuals at a given time and dance area number two will serve a maximum of 30 individuals. The applicant states that the morning schedule will primarily focus on adult classes and the afternoon classes will be a mixture of both children and adult classes. The classes will be organized by student level and not by age. So here we have a floor plan of the dance school. This is gonna be dance area number one. The applicant proposes that it's gonna have a maximum of 15 students and dance area two would be the 30 students allowed. And then they also have a lobby and an office and then the restroom and a storage. The applicant is requesting an administrative use permit for the use of a dance school in a planned community development zone that would occupy an existing 6,130 square-foot tenant space that is currently vacant. The proposed dance school will be named Legend Dance School and will provide a variety of dance classes to all ages. The classes will be offered to, will be organized by skill level and the dance school will be open from Monday to Friday from 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. only. Through the administrative use permit, findings were made to determine if the proposed use would be suitable for the existing site and neighborhood. The findings concluded that the proposed use is consistent with the commercial land use designation in the general plan, meets zoning code standards, and would not be detrimental to the health and safety of the adjacent land uses and residents. Staff recommends that the planning commission adopt resolution to approve administrative use permit number 17-02. And I believe that the applicant is also present. So if you have any questions, they'll be here. Thank you.
Thank you, Christine. And any questions of staff? None. Okay. And the applicant is here? Go ahead and come up, please, sir. And did I, I'll let you tell us your name. Hopefully, I didn't mess it up.
Welcome. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm really appreciate to stand in front of you and my wife, Lesia Sinista. I tell you a little bit about myself personally. First of all, I started to dance, now I'm 36 years old. I started dancing when I was seven years old in the school. And it was one of the lesson, regular, every Thursday. That's how I become a dancer. We've been retired three years ago because we have a baby, three years old, girl. Last hour decision was the best 12 in the world, in the professional dance world, ballroom. I believe that this dance, dancing world, it's very healthy for the adjudication of the boys and girls. We are from the beginning learn the kids to communicate with each other, to make a culture. It's a dress code, it's a timing, it's a talk with each other and to be appreciate each other. This is number one. Number two, we are living in the West Covina City and I'm not see around, especially the place when we would like to open the studio in front of the high school, in front of a lot of kindergartens around. We don't see any, that kind of places when the kids can make communications. We have, by myself, I was 3 o'clock in the afternoon in that plaza, just watching what the people doing after when they finish the high school. They staying in front of the CVS, they bought some snacks, they bought some Coke and staying and talking one hour, two hours, two and a half hours. They not moving really far away from that locations. And I think it's a good idea to give them opportunity to do ballet dance for the small kids. Usually, it's up to 15 years old, right? Strip dance and jazz, it's more for the teenagers around maybe 12 to 15 years old. Ballroom dancing, which is no have any limitation, all of you welcome to come because I have a clients every day teaching your age and it's good for the joints, it's good for the health, it's good for the body. Really, it's make our body straight longer. That's why I'm asking you to be in our boat and we're gonna try to do our best in this place for us and for the city. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. And do we have Commissioner Redholt? We've got a question.
Yeah, I've got a couple of que, have you, are you doing this someplace else or is this your first venture in the...
No. I used to open already school in Russia before I came to the United States of America. It's still working. It's very successful right now. So I moved here four years ago and I'm a little bit study the business how it's doing here, the schools. It's really a lot of big studios. Not big studios, it's all of them smalls, which is not really, honestly, you cannot create the professional good dancer on a small area. It's more commercial, it's more for the health and blah, blah, blah. But if we're looking for the professional to grow up, which we would like to have, we need more space. Because the ballroom dancing need the space. When we put the frame, pick up the elbow, start to move, it's dangerous for another couples. And we have a special line of dance which we cannot go opposite. It cannot be house. So we're teaching the people, if you came to the dance floor, you cannot stay on the line of dance, you cannot stay in the corners, you have to be out of that. So in that case, it's, we need this, just that way we need the space. And the landlord was very good for us. He good, give us a good price because we tried to see many places, but it was the best what we can have for now. And I hope this is place, it's good for the... Yeah, sorry.
To answer your question shorter, we have been teaching since we were about 16 years old, both of us, and that's what we do for a living. At the moment, just Dennis, I'm staying at home with the baby, but this is our first business in America yet, our first dance school.
And are, as far, are you gonna charge people per lesson or are you gonna try and sign them up for long-term?
Of course, it's gonna be, first of all, it's a group classes, which is gonna be easy to afford to everybody, right? And we, we're looking, because my small daughter, she is going for my gym and mommy and we're going for these private swimming pools and we are, we try to realize what is the ranking of the private lessons and how much is the group classes. Of course, we try to get more for the people to be afforded, first of all. Of course, private lessons in my business, it's not cheap, but if you would like to be professional, you have to take private lessons. Let's say if I want to take private lessons in the golf, you can pick up from $50 till $200 or $300, depend how serious you are. I think this is, it's already more private. But our business is to be more people involved for the group classes, for the communication and the different parties.
And one last question. Your age range says six to 86. Some 90-year-old guy comes in, you're not gonna turn him away, are you?
Of course not. No, we have a lot of, I personally used to have a student who's 93 years old now and I mean, anybody's welcome. The point was that rhymed. But we didn't want anybody younger than six because it is just very difficult to get them focused. Older is just, yeah. Well, older than 86, anybody's welcome, basically is the point.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Redholt. Commissioner Jimenez?
Are there any proposed events absent of the training?
Not really, but I've been in Black Bell, Taekwondo, and I've been in another places. I'm not really appreciate when the parents are sitting and watching how the kids are study dancing. I'll tell you why. Because after six months, the parents would like to be the teacher them as well. And the kids also not really open with each other when the parents watching. What we would like to do, I would like to put the camera on the studio when the parents can sit in the lobby and watching how it's going on inside of the studio, right? I didn't say they cannot watch, but please don't come inside. For the parents, we would like to do some small events, like to tell them, show them what we studied for last three months, when they welcome to sit and watch our lesson.
Thank you.
Is it, is it my answer? Great, yeah?
Thank you.
She said it's... No, this is the events which we would like to do for the parents, actually, like open group classes once in two months to reproduce them what we study. And every year, we would like to make like examinations for the kids to make sure that they serious taking lessons, then the teacher can say name of the figure, timing of the figure, and each student supposed to show up what they studied for the year.
I believe the idea is you want to showcase to the parents.
Exactly.
Or whoever's paying the bill.
Exactly.
That you are improving. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Heng, any questions? Do you guys have a Facebook page?
Not yet.
Not yet? Well, for showcasing, that'd be a great idea for video.
Thank you.
Good. I don't have any more questions, anything else you'd like to add? No? Well, thank you guys for coming up and telling us about your proposal.
Thank you.
I just have one question for staff.
Oh, go ahead, Commissioner Redholt.
You sent out, there was 374 notices sent out. Was there any, any feedback at all from anybody, up or down or...
No, we didn't receive any calls or any emails, nothing.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. And any more questions of staff?
Just a motion?
Well, we do have a few cards. We've got a few cards. We'll back, we'll bring Mr. Peter Wang back up since his card was for items two and three. You did want to speak on this, right, Mr. Wang?
Yeah.
Okay. Welcome back.
Again, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, Commissioner. We are J.W.I.O., is an architect engineer for this subject, know the project. And we're very honored, know the work with the owner and then we, actually, we're just here to answer any question that Commissioner has. And this property actually has been vacant there ever since it was built. Was never been occupied.
Never been occupied?
Never been occupied. It was built almost like 12, 10 to 12 years ago. Yeah. It was never occupied. So, so actually, and especially right now in this generation, most of retail store is being take over by internet business. So what, from what we see from the design or the industry, we find out most of business can survive, we call experience store. In other words, those business have to be personal there to get a service, such as beauty shop, beauty salon, gymnasium, all these things, you have to be there in order to survive. And actually, dancing school is one of the, know, the dancing school or is one of so-called experience store. So you have to be there. So this one, the owner, school owner got a very good deal from the, because it has been, never been approved, it never been improved. Based on what we see from the site, know, the no ceiling, no nothing, no drywall entirely, just totally, know, the, you know, it was like a bare bone type of things, know, the building right now. So by doing this one, you can not only reduce the vacancy of the retail store and also, know, having, know, a great, know, the teacher from Russia, know, to teach people ballet and, and ballroom dancing and give, other than just karate, I think it will bring in a lot of, know, the different experience for the community, my community as well. So we're, I'm just write down the course in case the Commissioner has any question. Talk too much, you get me in trouble. You guys know my...
It does sometimes. So right now, it's a, just a shell. It's a core and there's been zero improvements since construction?
Correct.
Okay. So you're doing the tenant improvement? Any major problems that you've noticed since...
Actually, no, the, I think, you know, the landlord or the property owner keep a very good shape. There's no, there's always a security around the premises. There's no vandalism, inside was very maintained beautifully and especially with the proposed, we actually, we pretty minimize, know, the work. So with no their budget, I think we could really afford these things.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any more questions? Okay. We've got a card on behalf of Mr. Stephen Ree. Welcome.
Good evening, staff, Commissioner, Planning Commission. I'm, I represent Dennis and Lesia. I'm the real estate agent that orchestrated the great deal that we've been talking about. Steve Ree, RE/MAX Commercial, call me if you need help. We actually looked extensively throughout this area. It wasn't just West Covina, it was Roland Heights, Diamond Bar, Walnut, Chino, Chino Hills. And at the end of the day, I think the fact that they live in West Covina, and it's literally two blocks away from where they live, they do have a newborn, so they need to be quickly to and from their businesses. It was a major factor. And the fact that we got a good deal to allow Dennis to, really, he's gonna create one of the, the top dance studios in Southern California. For example, the TI budget, I believe, is around $300,000. Flooring is, it's $50,000 for flooring that's being imported. This will be the best... Custom-made flooring. And in ballroom dancing, if you don't understand, it's not the glitz, it's not the makeup, it's not the long hair, the music like a Dancing the Stars, it's the flooring that makes a dance studio. It's, because you're constantly just bouncing around all day, shuffling and your knees and your joints. He's gonna install the best flooring that Southern California's ever seen. From a financial standpoint, he, you know, they, they downplay who they are. They are world-renowned. They are professional, were professional ballroom dancers. They retired a few years ago and they do a lot of high-end private tutoring lessons with high-end clients. And they get flown all over the world and do dance competitions for their clients. The last few years, all these private lessons, all that money's been going to a dance studio in Roland Heights, a dance studio on Chino Hills, a dance studio on Diamond Bar. Now, once this gets approved, that money can actually stay here in the city of West Covina. I know it's not retail, everybody likes retail, but for the reasons that Peter mentioned, the internet and the competition we're facing there, this is a business that will not only impact the well-being of the health of the local community, it's a way to retain some of the money and keep it within the community. So I just wanna thank Christine and her hard work and putting the package together and we look for a favorable result and look forward to opening up the best dance studio in Southern California. I promise you. All right. Thank you.
Where does the best flooring in the world come from?
Dennis? Where are you getting flooring from?
In China.
Oh, okay.
All right.
It was the, it took me already two months to get the samples, they put on the floor. I said, no, not now.
Do you wanna...
It's custom-made. It's custom, yeah, Italy, Italy.
Thank you.
No, no, I'm sorry. Made USA.
Thank you, Stephen.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Ree, for filling us in on all that. Great, great information. We've got another card on this item. I think it says Lesia Sinista? Oh, okay. I apologize. Good. Thank you. Well, then I think that, that everyone who'd like to speak on this item. Commissioner Redholt? We're ready for discussion.
Well, you know, as Mr. Wang said, and it's quite obvious that, you know, the retail climate, the shopping center type of leasing has changed dramatically. It's constantly in flux. One thing we know, it ain't going back. So it's just gonna go forward. This, I was on the commission whenever, when we approved that wing 10 years ago, whatever it was. And, you know, again, with the hopes and dreams of having it filled, and now we hear that it's, that at least that particular space has never been filled. It's, you know, raw. So I think, quite frankly, this is a really... So, I think, quite frankly, this is a really good use for that, even though it's not a retail use, still, you're going to be bringing people in to the, you know, to the site where there is other, you know, potential for other retail use, you know, purchases and so forth, spinoff if you, if you wish, you know, that could arise from, from that. And, you know, listening to the experience you both have and, you know, I'm looking forward to it, you know? I mean, dance is big, we know that, you know, Dancing with the Stars, So You Think You Can Dance, there's another World of Dance show coming on TV, so there's a lot of interest in dance. Used to be poker back, you know, a few years ago, now it's all dance. So, you know, people have moved on. But, you know, I'm looking forward to it, I'm looking forward to have a, a space filled and, you know, and I think it's going to generate some buzz and excitement. I don't think we have another dance studio in the city. I mean, yeah, so, you know, maybe you'll, you'll be the, the start and, you know, there'll be more, but, you know, and you've got a pretty good sized space there, and I think looking at the site plan, you're going to utilize it to the best of, of what the potential is there. So I'm looking forward to it and I wanted to make a motion to go forward with this right now.
Thank you, Commissioner Redholtz. The other thing I would add is I, I think, yeah, I think all the residents and, and businesses even around there would really appreciate that and from an exercise standpoint, I think it would be great and probably something I'd be interested in trying as well. And just one correction to Commissioner Redholtz, we do have another dance studio, but it's completely different, more geared towards children. We approved it here, it's on Azusa. But, but yeah, I think this is much different, much bigger, professional, and a great, great idea. We, we look forward to seeing it happen. That's all I'd have to add and I'd like to second Commissioner Redholtz's motion and with that, could we get roll call, please, Jeff?
Yes, Commissioner Hing?
Yeah.
Commissioner Jimenez?
Yes.
Commissioner Redholtz?
Aye.
Chairman Castellanos?
Yes. So the motion passes four to zero and this action is final unless appealed to City Council within 10 days. Congratulations, we look forward to having everything go well for you guys, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Glad to buy everybody.
Great, that'd be wonderful.
Herb's driving.
Driving, not dancing.
The commissioners will all have their dance.
You never know, don't be shy.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to number four on the agenda, non-hearing item. This is a Planning Commission authorized Planning Director's modification. This will be presented by Jeff Anderson, is that correct, Jeff?
No, Ron gets the pleasure of this one.
Ron gets the pleasure, okay. Sorry, Ron didn't mean to steal your thunder.
Thank you, Dario.
Go ahead.
Oh, shoot. I think I.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, he was using.
We're being MacGyver right now.
Menu.
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 Okay, very good. Thank you. Couldn't have done it without you. As indicated, the applicant is requesting the approval to deviate from previously approved Planning Commission authorized Planning Director's modification 1422. The project consists of a remodel to exterior of an existing retail center located at the northwest corner of North Grand Avenue and East Garvey Avenue North. Again, it's Grand Creek Plaza. The Planning Director's modification initially approved, number 1422, was reviewed and approved by the Planning Commission in 2014. Based on the approval, the applicant submitted plans to the building division and obtained building permits on June 25th, 2015. The renovation of the center included modifying the roof with varying height features with center roof elements, adding a cornice molding, stone veneer, and also improving the surface parking lot and landscaping. The renovation of the center was completed in November of 2016. Upon completion of the renovations, the applicant requested a final inspection in November of 2016 from planning staff. Upon staff's inspection, it was determined that the buildings were not renovated per the approved plans. The applicant indicated to staff that due to challenges and complications encountered during construction, they determined to continue with modifications different from the approved plans, which the letter has been provided to you in your staff report. Staff advised the applicant that the revised plan, that revised plans would be required to be submitted for Planning Commission review and consideration. The shopping center consists of four buildings. Again, you have Building B, A, C, and Building D, which is the Denny's building there. And here are photos, just to recap on what the center initially looked like before the remodel. The applicant modified the facades of the three existing retail buildings and again, as indicated in the plans, there's Buildings A, B, and C, and I'll go over each of the building facade changes. Here's what's, Building A, which was originally approved by the Planning Commission. As you notice here, the removal of decorative crowns at the center archways here were approved, cornice moldings as well. You see those here, they're cornice, decorative cornice lip moldings, and you notice that here and the, and the crowns, and also the tower, tower element here. This is the as-built, as you notice, there's no tower there, no crown molding, no crowns, decorative moldings, as well as cornice decorative moldings here. And you notice the same thing in this area as well. Moving on to Building B again, you see the, the crowns proposed and the decorative cornice moldings located here, here, and also along the parapet. And this was what was proposed. One thing to note on Building B, this area here was approved as an open area. With the as-built, they semi-enclosed this area. And again, the decorative cornice moldings and also the crowns are, are missing. Moving on to Building C, again, the same decorative materials were approved. And then moving on to Building C as what was actually built. And this is the east elevation, the west elevation, facing east. And then this is Building A. Although the applicant deviated from the approved plans, the architectural styles remain consistent to the previously approved plans. Staff has conditioned that the clock tower located on Building C, which you can see, barely see in this photo, which is here, this is remnant of the, of the previous type, the previous architecture there and notice that the staff is recommending the removal of that clock tower. Again, because the clock tower design does not complement the exterior facade renovations, the applicant has indicated to staff that they are in agreement to remove the clock tower. In summary, the revised facades provide scale, color, detail, and modernize, modernize the elevations of the buildings to create that visual interest. Although the exterior modifications are different from the previously approved plans, the upgrades to the existing buildings result in the same intent of the previously approved plans. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission approve Planning Director's modification 1710, subject to the following conditions, and again, just to highlight, the removal of the clock tower located on the roof of Building C shall be removed prior to scheduling a final inspection. If I'm correct, there is a representative from the ownership present for any additional questions and I'd be happy to answer any questions as well.
Thank you, Ron. We do have a question by Commissioner Redholtz.
Yeah, thank you. What, what is the proper process and procedure if, like in this particular case, they're obviously aware that they're not following the approved plan, I would think? So what would they need to do during the process? They have to come back and, and resubmit or, I mean, what, what didn't they do that they should have?
Essentially, what should have been done was they should have stopped all work and got approval, resubmitted plans and scheduled before the Planning Commission for review and approval, given the fact that the approval was granted by the Planning Commission, and then resubmit plans to the building department for those modifications and then proceed with, with construction.
And throughout, there's an inspection process that goes on, correct?
There is an inspection process.
Did anybody, nobody caught the fact that they weren't?
I'm still trying to answer that question. I, I will say that this, this situation is a bit of an anomaly, never experienced this. But again, when we went out to final inspection, advised the, the, the construction manager that, that plans needed to be resubmitted and staff could not approve what was built in order to move forward with getting final certificate of occupancy. So that's where we're at today.
Okay, and you're, you're recommending that we basically bless what's in front of us?
Staff is recommending approval, but it's up to the Planning Commission for any other additional conditions.
And, and I think that staff's thought on this is that if this would have been submitted originally, we probably would have recommended approval. So it's, it's not like they're taking, they're proposing something that we might not have considered at the beginning. And keeping in mind that they're coming forward involuntarily redesigning the center, so we want to have some understanding of that. As Ron said, it would, it would have been probably better if we would have gotten this in the middle of the process and not at the end. It would have been better for them too, they, they've sort of been left holding, on hold while we go through this process, so that would have been ideal.
Thank you, Commissioner Redholtz. Any, any more questions of staff? Would the applicant come up, please? And your name is, is it Ron Platisha?
Platisha.
Platisha.
Thank you.
Welcome.
I'm the chief operating officer for BH Properties. We are the owner of Grand Creek Plaza. And I think the issue started back at, when we started the remodel. We, we wanted to do something that would improve the occupancy of the center and also the rents that we were, we were earning. And we contacted a contractor who told us that he could do the, the job in about six months and it was going to cost something less than $600,000. Seventeen months later, we were still working on the project and the cost was at $700,000. So the modifications that were made to the design was merely an attempt on our part to minimize the overruns that were occurring on, on the project. To be honest, from my own standpoint, I assume that the inspections that were being done was blessing this. I did not realize myself that, that we were in violation of anything until we went through the final inspection and found that there was, there was differences and, and they were obviously needed to be addressed. I can say that the center is doing really well right now, we're about 97% occupied. We brought in an upscale restaurant called Craft Hills, it's doing really well. It's a whole lot better than the buffet that we had there before.
House of Louis.
House of Louis. And in reality, the, the tenants are very, very pleased. They were not pleased about a 17-month build period because during that time, there was scaffolding up and that, we had a lot of tenants that were complaining and, and demanded rent reductions and we were stuck having to honor those simply because of the timeframe. So at the end of the day, I'm hoping to, to have you grant our approval for the modifications that have been made. Like I said, it wasn't our intent to try to do something on the side or on the sly, it was just simply a lack of our understanding of the process. And I'm here to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Commissioner Jimenez?
So you used the same contractor through the whole process from start to finish?
Unfortunately, yes.
Okay. And the cost, it sounds like went over 700,000?
Correct.
Okay.
And that was with the modifications to simplify the design.
Okay, thank you.
Just one comment about the paint. One thing that I noticed, I go to Craft Hill often, well, and I drive by it often, every day probably. One suggestion I would make for next time paint comes around is, is maybe eliminating that green.
Okay.
Maybe a lot of people disagree with me, maybe not, but when I, when I looked at it on the paper, the original time around, it, it looked good to me. For some reason, it just doesn't look right to me. I think the rest of the colors look fine, not meant to be a criticism or anything, just a thought to consider for, for next time around. But as far as this goes, I sympathize with you with cost overruns, I know how complicated construction can be, but I, I did want to get that out there because I felt like, I, I think colors are always difficult whenever I've had to pick colors and, and I've always learned from color schemes I've picked and I just wanted to offer that suggestion.
I appreciate that.
No problem.
Being colorblind myself, it's a little difficult, but I know we're doing a project right now in, in Phoenix and people that are not colorblind had reviewed the, the drawings and stuff and it looked great until they actually put the paint on the wall. And what was supposed to have been a gray turned out to be a baby blue and we ended up having to repaint it. It was just so off that you, we couldn't leave it the way it was. But I appreciate the comments on the, on the colors.
Excuse me, water went down the wrong way, but yeah, that's, that's what I've noticed with, with paint, is it could look good in a smaller.
Right.
Smaller scale, but when it's big, it might look a little different. Anyway, that, that was, that was my two cents. Any other comments or questions of the applicant? All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
For coming up. We'll open it up to Commission discussion, Commissioner Redholtz.
Yeah, thank you. Let me tell you, this, what is there now is a lot better than what was there before. It's, it's a lot better. You're also very fortunate to have Craft Hill because it takes one go-to destination location like that to make a center pop. And I've been there several times, it's a happening place, you know, and that's, it's driving people to the center. You know, I was there the other day to look at, you know, for this meeting and the parking lot was packed, you know? I think, what are you, 97% you said? So, you know, that's pretty good. That's pretty good, you know? So I know the, originally, the Denny's was a Coco's and then it flipped into a Denny's and, you know, with the same ownership, but it's a big improvement and as Jeff alluded, you know, it most likely what you eventually did build would have been approved. And, you know, to the unknowing eye that doesn't know that the cornice, that, none of that's there, it still looks good, you know? So, you know, I, I think from my seat, if, if what you did build, you know, I feel confident I would have approved it. So I don't see an issue, I understand, you know, my questions were that, you know, there was a, a process for inspections and so forth and, you know, we got to this point and now we find out that we didn't do that. So, you know, okay, that's the way it is, but, you know, you've made the improvements, you've spent the money, you've got tenants, it's a popular place, people like it, you know? Let's move on, that's my thought.
Thank you, Commissioner Redholtz. I agree with all that, I think it looks great and looks like with the removal of the clock tower and the proposed changes, I, I think the center's going to look great and do just fine. Were there any other comments, any commissioners? None? Well, then I'm prepared to make motion to approve the Planning Director's modification.
I'll say it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes four to zero. And thank you again for coming up and we, we wish you the best and again, sympathize with the overrun, but I think you'll, you'll do just fine in the long run. Were there any other comments, any commissioners? None? Well, then, I'm prepared to make a motion to approve the Planning Director's modification.
I'll say it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes four to zero. And thank you again for coming up, and we, we wish you the best. And again, sympathize with the overrun, but I think you'll, you'll do just fine in the long run.
By the way, your, your planning staff is.
Thank you. We really appreciate that. Thank you, staff. They do a wonderful job. Well, again, thank you and, and good luck with everything. No problem. That takes us to continuation of oral communications. Would anybody like to speak on anything not on the agenda? Nobody's jumping at that, so we'll move on to commission reports, comments, and miscellaneous items. Commissioner Redholtz, please.
I have a couple of questions. When I went out there to Quail Ridge and looked at the, you know, the dance studio site, across the way, there's a Corner Tavern. What about that place?
Collection Baby.
Huh?
Collection Baby. When it came to you, it was called Collection Baby. What?
Oh.
The owner changed the name, so I believe that it was reviewed under the Planning Commission under Collection Baby, but then the name has been changed. And they're under the process, I believe, of name change through the business license. They actually recently came here to change their sign, but I guess they've already put their sign up.
Well, they have a, a banner.
Oh, it's a banner on top.
Yeah, they ain't got no sign yet.
Oh, okay. Yeah, because they.
They got a banner, and it is a, I mean, it's an al, they're selling alcohol, right?
Yeah, it's, it's a, it's a restaurant. So, it's a restaurant.
Collection Baby? What the heck was that?
It was, it was the same thing.
It was a restaurant?
Yes, but then they called it Collection Baby. But then now.
Why they're changing the name?
They're obviously changing the name to Corner Tavern. And they actually recently came in, in regards to their sign. But then I asked them to show proof of, of a change of ownership. Or not change of ownership, but the name change for the license, for the business license. But they were approved, was that last, I think that was last year, 2015? Yeah.
Okay.
For their ABC license for a bona fide rep.
So, it was, it was a business we worked with for a while, but it's a restaurant. It's kind of a, of a, more of a sports bar.
It, it's like a sports bar.
Well, yeah, I mean, when I went there, it wasn't open at that, when was I there, Sunday afternoon? It wasn't open, but you peek inside, they've got a DJ, I mean, they got a big blackboard in there with all kinds of events and so forth, so. You know, there's things going on there.
I, I actually yelped it recently, and you could check out what they offer, and they have videos and stuff. And yeah, it's pretty active.
Yeah, good, good. Okay, the other thing I wanted to mention was, for everybody, this Saturday is Community Service Day in the city. And, you know, if anybody wants to get involved and participate in, you know, cleaning up or painting or whatever, there's an organized effort to spend, you know, a good part of the morning into the early afternoon, sprucing areas up throughout the city, parks and so forth. And there's a, a meeting time, I think 7:30 here at City Hall. There's going to be like a little continental-type breakfast. And then you'll fan out to your designated area to work. And then after that, come back, and there's a barbecue. So, this Saturday, that would be here. So, that's a good way to, to pitch in and help and be involved and, you know, spruce up the city, and, you know, you'll feel good. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Redholtz. Good comments. Would anybody else like to comment anything? Planning Director's report?
On the Planning Director, Planning Director's report, we have the forthcoming, which we do have items for the next meeting. And so, that will be on the ninth. One of the things we'll be doing there is election of officers. So, that's a, it's a time in the code says that we rotate officers for the, the Planning Commission. And then we also have for you tonight, the Planning Commission Project Stash Report of projects that have been approved by the Planning Commission and where they're at in the, in the process.
And currently, nothing for the 23rd of May?
Currently, nothing for the 23rd, and it may be that we don't have a meeting on the 23rd.
Thank you. Any city council action?
Yes, on, a week ago tonight, on the 18th, the Plan, the City Council reviewed the accessory dwelling unit code amendment, and they did, they did pass that. So, it will have a second reading next week, and it will take effect in about mid, mid-June. And then, we all, the next meeting on the 2nd, we will be having the code amendment hearing for the marijuana regulations. So, those are, those are both moving forward.
Thank you, Jeff, and thank you, everybody, for coming. We are adjourned.